Everybody to the workshop. Glad you all met this. And I guess I'll call it order. And we start with the real call members.
Dan Osborne, President.
Andrew Strati, President.
Barry McManayway, President.
And John Christus, President. Also noted as our building commissioners. Sitting here.
And our town attorney.
And our town attorney and our town manager. It's so nice.
Right, um, yes, your own case, I guess. Okay.
Just notice being recorded.
Yes, everything is being recorded.
Right.
And I guess we're here to talk about the storage units out there. No concerns, concern about the.
Yeah. And that was kind of, as we started, wanted to hear from you guys on questions that you had or concerns and I'll have Alan here so that he can kind of help answer some of those questions. It's the kind of the director of the whole process and construction. So just kind of want to hear from you guys, what your thoughts were, questions were, concerns, those types of things.
Let's start with Go. Yeah, well, I think one of the things here, Burke, is, you know, how this whole project was presented to us. And what we gave the variance for was for leasing these units.
Right.
Okay. And apparently that's not the case. I realize that some of these units are for sale now. And that was not what we were originally told. And there were also restrictions put on, you know, some of the things. And what concerns me, if these units are being sold, then we, as the town, have no restrictions or control over somebody that would buy those units. Because we talked about overnight stay, we talked about partying, you know? And that was one of the things that we did not want at all with this project. You know, and that was something that when we, you know, went through that.
Right.
That we had these restrictions and that something like that would take that totally out of our control. You know, that's, that's a big issue.
And that's where, yeah, and that's where, because we can answer some of those things. Like, kind of where I was coming from as we started the meeting is, I don't know what, I don't know, kind of thing of what your guys' concerns are, so we can answer to some of those.
Yeah.
Um, and so, uh, if the concern is in the use of the unit after a sale versus after a lease, or what the intent is, you know, that we can answer that question, but I want to make sure that that's, is that.
That is one of the concerns, yes.
Yeah, okay. Was there other, I mean, other than that of?
Well, let's just, let's just agree, we don't have time now, I lead into some other issues.
So you can kind of answer that.
Okay. Presently, um, we preserve the restriction. Whether you are a tenant, a landlord, or an owner tenant, or an owner landlord. Because these are lease- leasable space. In other words, you could buy one and lease it out. So we haven't changed the lease mechanism. The lease still has the same restrictions. The only thing we've done to shore it up even more is in reviewing the idea of selling a unit and making sure that we had the control in place that we promised the city we would maintain. Our council advised, um, and obviously we have Burke, but we also use Steve Snyder. And then we have in-house, um, Keith Wooler. So the team got together and said, you know, what really makes the most sense is if we do sell a unit, you could either sell an interest as a, a tenant investor, where they buy into the LLC and they lease a unit. That's one possibility. The other possibility would be to do a condominium style ownership. Please don't confuse that with residential condominium. There are condominium office buildings like, uh, I did the, uh, Lifeplex Building on US 30. That's a condominium commercial building. Condominium referring to the type of ownership, which is a horizontal property regime where the medical center owns half of the building. And they have a common wall, it's actually a hall, that they each go to the center of, and the wellness center owns half. That's the type of ownership condominium. When you do a condominium ownership, you file a set of rules and regulations. And those rules and regulations, believe, believe me, are very enforceable. They're not only enforceable, but they, uh, it's possible to get a lien and force the execution of those regulations. And to get for the HOA to get reimbursed for legal fees and fees and also fines if people don't follow them. It's a very compelling type of ownership, which we have at the HOA in Maple Ridge, which we have at the HOA in, um, Centennial Crossing in Plymouth and other locations. But the point I want to make is that it's a very strong rules and regulations entity for control. And in our rules and regulations, it specifically addresses that there shall be no residential overnight stay, that these are storage facilities to be used. As storage facilities, obviously, uh, the man cave concept is going to exist there, always was part of our hope, and that being the person's washing his RV or his car or whatever, he's got a kitchen there and he wants to make a sandwich or he's all sweaty and he wants to go out to dinner and he wants to take a shower. That's always been part, or the guy that owns the one across the street wants to have a cigar and a beer with him or a pop or whatever their beverage is. We, we don't intend to preclude that from happening. I don't think this body does either. But we're not going to have weddings there. We're not going to have, it specifically prohibits having weddings and, uh, concerts and any venue and gathering that would create a common nuisance is strictly prohibited. So I want to assure everyone here that we're not going to do anything to change the intent from day one of what, what we were intending to do there. And what we represented it would be, this is an executive storage facility. This is not a storage facility, a tin can for storage facility that is strictly for someone who wants to come in and bring their stuff out of their garage so they can get their car in it. This is much more sophisticated than, much more expensive. And we're trying to create a very professional, very high quality environment, uh, in what we build there.
So looking at the, in the process of the way the property would be used and the type of approval and concern, all those things are answered in the documents that would be filed to create the condominium regime. So all the same protections are still there, uh, and limitations. The, a big question that came up a lot of times, just who's going to oversee? Who's going to make sure that all these things are, uh, are, are held up? And the answer was always property management maintenance, and that's still going to be true. Property manager maintenance is still going to be the property manager for the property. Alan and Chris are still maintaining ownership of the building. Uh, that was always discussed. But now with the condominium regime, you'll also have other people who own a, a portion of a building that are going to be policing and making sure that nobody is doing, uh, something that they're not supposed to be doing. So you have self policing that's now, uh, an expansion beyond just property management maintenance. Any type of, uh, security system for cameras and stuff, that's still a place. And then as people, you know, as renters, they're going, would have wanted to maintain and make sure that nobody's living in the unit. Somebody's doing something they shouldn't be doing, no one's having a party and presenting a danger to these units that are going to store hundreds of thousands, potentially millions of dollars worth of stuff. Uh, now those people are there and they're going to say, you know, no, you're not going to have a, you're not going to be out here having a party and endangering all the stuff that we have. So you have a little bit better even stepped up oversight, uh, for the property. Going all those things, we saw the, the use of, when you have a person who says, well, I want to purchase. I don't want to be a renter, I want to be a purchaser for any number of personal reasons. That provides more security than less. And so, and if, you know, you know, one response, one question was, well, if someone violates this, how do you make them do what they're supposed to be doing? Well, with the condominium regime is, you know, Kevin can probably explain too, uh, from Maple Ridge. I mean, peer pressure is a lot of enforcement. You know, you don't want to have people picking out what you're doing and not supposed to be doing. Uh, so fall in line for there, but there's also fines and successive, the, the board, the board of directors could increase fines and use those fines as liens, just like an assessment for the HOA expenses as a lien on the unit. And then if that is not complied with, that lien can be foreclosed and the property can be sold, uh, even for an owner. So there's an immense amount of oversight restriction and enforcement of those rules. And when you look at a place like Maple Ridge, I mean, those rules aren't broken. They're not allowed to be broken a little bit, but once or twice, or, you know, as soon as something comes up, you got to get on that right away or else it gets away from you. And so that's where the maintenance and maintaining that is paramount.
Breaking for a minute, because, I mean, we're talking about McBridge, which is a PUD, tiny development. This up here is not. And each one of them has different things that go along. But I know my, my concern, really, my concern is you were issued a special use permit for this development. And everything that was presented was that they were going to be leased, not so. I mean, I got minutes from, uh, June 17th, 2021. And that was pretty much from the start, you know?
Yeah.
And it was like presented, you know, and, and you were explaining about the, uh, this later in one paragraph. But Mr. Richardson explained planning executive storage was the highest best use of the property, considering that C2 zoning law for bars, trucks, that has any going on. He said the storage facility would not generate more traffic than any of those huge, which far as variance. In response, in other words, you wouldn't need variance for that. And you explained that the development was not a PUD, thus none of the units would be sold and would remain under the management of the developers. And you also said the developer was willing to pay up for the cost to her.
Right.
But, I mean, going back to what, and it was actually annexed during the same process as well. And I'm assuming it's already managed. Oh, yeah. But under that special use permit, this is what was presented for the BZA to approve or or consider other options that you would have.
Right.
But when it was approved, it was approved under these stipulations. And then when you change the idea of selling whatever, I assume, I shouldn't assume anything, but I would think that under that special use permit, it should have been brought back.
Well, nothing's been done yet either. So there's no condominium regimes not been filed, there's no anything in terms of that there's been a change. There's also, go ahead.
I wasn't at the meetings and maybe it would have helped if I had been there, so I apologize. But I want to emphasize a couple of things. One, we came for the purpose that we were required to come for, which was to determine what kind of zoning we needed to build storage facilities. Not ownership. We came here for the specific purpose of determining what kind of zoning permitted use we were asking for. No time did we say that we would never sell part or all of the facility. Because at that point, we really didn't have any plans to. Our plans at that time when we requested that was that we would request the type of zoning we needed for a special permitted use to build storage facilities. That's all we asked for. Also, I kind of pleased, just make one other point, thank you. The other thing is, we could put a motel on there today. It's a zone for a hotel right now.
Correct.
Okay, they can stay overnight, we can put a gas station on there.
Right.
Okay, so I, I don't quite, I'm a little lost where we're going with this.
Where we're going with it is under a special use permit is what you came for. That's what came before the BZA. The zoning, all that was already C2. And we weren't asking for a zoning change at any time because you would have been coming to the planning commission, not the, not the BZA.
I agree.
And so the BZA was presented per request of a special use permit for the executive storage units.
Correct.
And I'm just saying, that was what was requested. That was what was discussed at every meeting.
Yeah, if I can just add a little bit, I don't, I know Steve and I are, we're both new to this, I think, is that all the approvals happened before we were working for the town and we've had some discussions to try to unearth what was going on in the last couple of weeks. I don't know how much of that he's shared with you in setting this meeting, but, um, so my read on everything was that, um, in those minutes from 2021 that you have there, at the very end, when the motion is made, it's pretty clear. It says like, after all that discussion, ultimately the board unanimously decides that, you know, based on the having these certain terms in the lease, that you're going to approve the, the special use. And the special use provisions, um, in the state code and then in your, in your ordinance say that you can put conditions on, on those. So I pretty strongly felt as though that first approval in 2021, that that was a condition you placed on, that there was going to be leased. And you, you talked about, you wanted to see the language of the lease and things like that. And then, um, as we understand it, then sometime, I think November of 2022, a new application was made, I think, just to renew the, this, this, because it was going to expire, because they hadn't started the project yet. And I think, I think a lot of the reasons were there was, even though this is a separate project from the dunes, like we had to, we're getting the water supply down there through the grant funds associated with that. And there were lots of delays with all the approvals and things. So it made sense that they were going to renew it. Um, and then the renewal process, that happened during the time when, um, when Jenny Monroe was serving as the interim building commissioner. And it seemed as though there wasn't a formal application that we could find on file. It seemed as though it was just kind of like, we know this project, it's already been through the pipeline, let's get it renewed for you. So it seemed like the minutes of that meeting, which was February 2023, were a lot more sparse. And it doesn't have a discussion about the leases and stuff. But then I think three of you were on the, at the time in 2023, there were four members of the board that were on the original board back in 2021 that approved it. And now there's three of you that were on at that original time. I think the, the findings of fact that you guys wrote up after the approval that happened seemed to be pretty quickly at the 2023 meeting. I think it was John and Danny, you wrote in your comments like subject to lease or with lease conditions or something like that. So those were the, the only things, it didn't seem as clear in that second approval that it was an express condition. But also it seemed as though the majority of you guys had been there from the first time and were just thinking it was the same thing going through. And you thought it was subject to the lease. And so that's why I said, hey, I can understand where they're coming from, that I think that you can cover all of the restrictions that you want to see in the lease in the, the condominium regime and those covenants and that it can be covered, but I fully agree with you, Barry, that what was presented and approved, um, was that lease ownership. And I think that was a condition of this. So I think if, if, if you get comfortable with the different kind of ownership, I would say that I think they still need to file to have this before you one more time with a hearing to approve it without that condition.
Thank you, John. I mean, I was, I mean, I've been on BZA for several years.
We came on together, we've been on five or six, five or six years.
And then been on planning commission for a while, planning for 25. So, I mean, I'm pretty familiar with protocol as far as meetings are approved, I mean, with your fine facts with everything else.
The other, yeah, and I, and I can, when we, when we came in 21, we're always in a, with the letter of intent talks about leasing the units and those types. The condominium stuff is, is a question in ownership of, uh, not necessarily a use. And so the use of the, of the facilities is not going to change. It's still going to be used as storage facilities.
Right.
The restrictions on how it is used are still enforced. The lease that you guys approved or saw is a requirement of the condominium regime that if the owner wishes to lease their unit, they have to use that lease that you guys saw. So it's even further another step. So it's part of, uh, it's part of the process. So there's not been, uh, moving away from the use at all. Just a, and, and so at the time, when we're looking at it to say, it was an intent to lease, you go to try and use some of these and buyers and stuff come in, or potential lease source come in and they say, well, I'd like to leave, I'd like, I would rather buy a unit as opposed to leasing. So you say, okay, well, can we accomplish that within the rules and restrictions of how we're using the property as a storage facility? And all of those documents provide that same security. Uh, and now they're not just leases, it's a recorded document that runs with the land for perpetuity until or wish, uh, if it were to be, ever be changed. So it's a recorded document with the county recorder. Everybody's on notice of what the rules and restrictions and covenants are. It's not just part of the lease and approval from the BZA, it's a recorded restriction of the law.
Right, which is part of the.
I just don't understand, why didn't you come with that from the beginning? When you first came with us, to us, why didn't you say, hey, here's what we're going to do, we're, we're going to have ownership, we're going to have, you know, you know what I'm saying? I mean, because.
But that's, yeah.
That I didn't, that I don't, that I'm kind of hard to grasp around this, that why wasn't that presented to us from the get-go? I mean, that's.
The, the condominium regime and stuff wasn't discussed or like the documents that we have. I didn't start preparing until after the, I was like in April of this year was when I started preparing that. So that's after the approval. So the, the thought process that there could be purchases out there, but it was not the original intent of the design. So I couldn't come in and tell you that, oh, we're going to probably sell some interest in the LLC or put a condominium regime. And because that wasn't the initial ten.
We would be a requirement to give notice that we're going to sell interest in the house. I mean, we could bring in partners and you guys could probably care less.
Yeah.
But, uh, and, and maybe, maybe we still do some hybrid. If it makes everybody feel good, uh, I'm, I'm not willing to take the risk at this stage with the amount of money I'm spending in this community to come in here and try to pick out the pepper when, if there's a way to do it that's simple and fair and makes everybody happy. So I think this is why we're having this discussion. Would it be fair, not that I'm not a team player, because I, sure anybody knows me, they know I am. I think that at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is have the, the best value. Uh, and I'll share this with you, the tax value assessed valuation of this project based on how we're recommending that we market it is double what it would be as a rental facility. Okay, and that, the ultimate goal is to give the customer what they want and to give the city what they want. And to have a profit at the end of the day, let's face it, that's the goal and a great tax base for it.
Would it be fair to say that, as I listen and look through the documentation, that market, that change in the language is market driven by a need, the market demand wants to buy rather than lease. You have a certain market that's changed since the original language in there.
Let me insert one thing.
Yeah.
We're selling less than half of the units and we're leasing over half of the units.
Correct, but you saw a mixed use market rather than a single model, but is that fair?
From the purpose of zoning, it's the same.
Yeah.
That's not changing, it's the same zone.
Right, I'm just looking for the char, I'm looking to characterize what drove the change in the language rather than whether it's.
Sure.
That I, as I listened to Barry in the planning, I think one of the issues was that they weren't informed of that change. And that it's a process rather than the change itself. It's going through the process to have that put into the special use, would that be fair?
Yeah, I mean, the, the process needs to go ahead as far as process itself. Because right now we've got, I mean, everything's been recorded. And we have citizens out here that are seeing changes and wanting to know what's going on.
What changes did they see?
Changes they're seeing is hearing, I should.
As I say, as I say.
It's the same footprint.
I was gonna say, yeah, that's important because there's not been any change to the design.
And I'm going to build a motel right behind that.
What's, um, what, um, I have heard and what I would like to say, since, you know, it was mentioned that I was not part of the board when this initially came on and that I didn't know some things, I went back and listened to all of the recordings. And the BZA minutes, uh, and recordings from December 15th, 2022. Burke, you repeatedly stated that these were going to be leased, they're not condos. You repeated the word tenant multiple, multiple times. You were asked by a, a board member if people were going to be owning these and you said, no, they're all rentals. And, and I have been under the impression from the moment I walked in on this board and heard all these things, I have always heard that these were going to be rentals.
Correct, and that's the initial intent, that was the instruction, that was the request was for that. So the, the, the thought process and changing of ownership of a unit was as a result of going to lease these units to people who would want to lease them. And they say, why didn't one of these, and I would like to buy it. And then so the, there was not a underlying, uh, undisclosed intent to sell after getting approval. That was a portion of the, the leasing.
Right, I under, understand what you're saying. It's just the timeline of all this stuff is what causes me great concern. I, I mentioned December 15th of 2022, we are now in July of 2024. There had been several other hearings about this in the interim. Most recently, three or four months ago?
By the last time was in February.
Yeah, okay, five months ago. Okay.
And that was the final approval of the secondary request. The initial request, we had the 20 or 12 months and it lasts.
Oh, right.
And then there was a secondary request with, with, uh, the original time we came in, Sean. Mr. Dewitt had not published notice and we were concerned that there had not been published notice. So we published notice, we had another meeting as a full new request. And so, and there was as of.
That was February 2023, right?
Right, right, February 23rd, yeah. And so then as that process got along, I mean, then that's where all that discussion of lease came from. If it's, if it's my fault to come back and to not come back and say, hey, it looks like there's a change in the type of ownership of this entity and we want to change that and here's all the protections that we can provide, then that was a mistake on my part. But the use had never changed, the type of, the, the type of design, the, the number of units, all that kind of, all the number of buildings, all that stuff was exactly the same.
Right, but the conditions, those conditions that were added throughout this, the questions that were asked and the answers that we got. Those conditions were based on whether it be approved or not at that time.
Well, and what I determined, what I interpreted those conditions to be was as a condition of use, not necessarily if it was a tenant who, who had a lead, a 12-month lease, or if it was, we talked about always having a lease because we hadn't necessarily talked about selling them as condos. But if you had said, well, if you sell them as condos, and that had been something that we had discussed and brought before the board, I would say, well, any condominium regime that we have, we can address these same concerns. You were not concerned about who owns it, you were concerned about how they use it.
I had to listen to the minutes, but I can agree to a, a degree with what Burke's saying in that I think the, the way I interpreted your, the board's concern about making it, uh, you know, wanting to see that lease is that you didn't want people living there and the residential thing was a big deal. And I think, I think like Alan mentioned before, that the word condo in people's minds makes you think that it's going to be a condo like somebody's living in, not just the ownership style. So, um, I, I, that's kind of where I, but it was described certainly in the condition that it's subject to a lease.
I mean, it was a concern because, I mean, it was the main thing in the mix when, you know, you, you knew that people on the board was concerned about people that don't.
We're, we're not, we're not challenging.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I appreciate everything you're saying too. I'm not, it's not an argument thing here at all.
Well, I understand.
Right, right. But I'm just saying, under proper protocol, if you want to say it. It was never addressed as that for the special use. And the special use was granted under those conditions.
Would you be happier if I just did 99-year leases and didn't sell them? Would that make you happy?
What I miss about the project here that you're. But I missed one project here that you're trying to make me happy. I'm not, I'm only.
I mean, I'm not, I don't mean you specifically, the board. I mean. Uh, I could always do ninety nine year leases um and. Then it's a lease.
Well, and and I'm happy if the if the discussion is if it makes the board happy to come back and say. Okay, we have the special use exemption and that as a lease and that's completely within bounds. And again, we haven't changed anything. There's, as of today, there's been no condominium regime in place and all that. So we come back and we ask for a a. Minor revision where we say, okay, the the. If if there is a condominium regime put in place, it has to have these languages, these things in there, just as the same was in the lease. And we say, okay, if we decide to put in a condominium regime, and if we do that, it has to have those languages in there. And we would agree to that because we've already said, you know, that's already part of the condominium regime documents that we've been preparing. Um, and ask for that approval. So then that's part of the approved special use exemption. And again. It provides all the same safeties and it provides, I think, more control, more oversight, more um. Stick uh to make sure that there's compliance.
Right.
Then if you're saying that that's the process, then, you know, we, if we choose, if my client chooses to go through that process. We can go through that process. He can certainly now just go and lease the units because that's what's approved. And that's, you know, so we could continue on with what's been approved.
Right.
And put in leases or.
You're wanting to sell the units. I'm not saying.
Right, right, right. Well, that's why I want to get.
Please tell us.
Yeah.
So so a question I have for Sean and B, if we were to move forward on this. Um, and developers would like to come back for the B Z A. Would that take a whole new B Z A legal notice or do they just need to come in? Inform the B Z A that they have a different intent. What would that?
Do a a new legal notice just so that we we would, uh, I mean, it could be. Titled a, you know, request to modify the the, you know, the special use that's already been granted or something like that. But just so all the. Interested parties in in the neighborhood get their notice, have their chance to say their piece if they'd like to.
Right.
And they, would it be an add to the existing? Yeah, I think it could be.
I think it can be.
And and essentially what we're asking, if I understand more correctly, is you, we'd like the new language added in that includes some of the sales. Also the guarantee that these aren't residential living.
Right.
And then the the covenant that ensures that with the H O A.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's certainly my recommendation based on.
Hearing.
Um, I think that I I, you know, it'd be my recommendation that. I think all of your concerns about what you wanted to see in the lease can be addressed. With these covenants and with the existing lease that way they've described, and I agree with what Alan said, that. The uh, the tax advantages to the town of having uh some of the portion of those sold, it is going to generate. A certain amount of increased tax revenue. So that is an advantage to the town. Uh, that I think uh with considering that in a, in a new application to revise it. I think you could meet everybody's needs.
Well, I I mean, I want to be real one hundred percent clear. Uh. There was no intent whatsoever on my part to present something that it was.
No.
You know, so and I I wouldn't do that if anybody thinks that. Kind of offended by it. Uh, because I didn't, I didn't do that. Uh, I'm only doing what I'm instructed to do from my client. But I mean, so I want to be clear. I mean, is that what you think that I did or that I?
Yeah, all I ever heard out of you was rentals. Okay, so that's the only thing that that I can believe. Is what is what was presented and what was stated, and that was it was rentals.
So you're saying I was misleading this line?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying you stated it was rented.
I think that was, I was trying to get it. I I'm sorry to intercede, but that's why I was asking for the change in language when I asked. What I heard was that there was an evolution in the market. Somebody came and said, why can't we buy these and say sell? That happened after the approval.
Right. I one hundred percent clear. I want to be very clear. I did not come here and purposely mislead. I could lose my law license for that. Why would I come in here? Well, I want to, I'm not saying you did. I just want to be real clear. I came in here and made the same thing from the letter of intent. And asked for the same approvals. The use is exactly the same. No way, shape or form any different. And I'm sure that there's case law that very much supports the use of the property in this manner. And I would hope that as we come through and provide all the same securities to the board. We would see the same type of response because we provide all the same. Securities and more benefits.
Yeah, I agree with all that. But when you're talking about use. The selling of a unit is a use. And the special use was presented and approved. You presented it in the way that we approved it, not saying that you might want to change it later.
Yeah.
Now that you want to change it, do whatever. I think just like Mr. Truett just said. Just come back, present it again, and we'll see what it looks.
Well. That says something to it. In all due respect, I totally disagree with that statement. But you're on that side of the desk and I'm on this side of this. And I'll just say this. We're gonna do what we need to do to be the best partners. But the city will call where we can be, period. Whatever that takes. Whatever your expectations do, we need to see it in writing. So that we can have it looked at and make sure that it meets. Certain tests. That's all, that's all.
Yeah, and it's all I'm asking.
Yeah, sure. They're gonna get help regardless of what the language is. That's for sure. We we all, we all want to see that. Okay? Kind of happen regardless. That's not, that's not gonna.
Yeah.
Dan, I just, I just think we're so hung up on the word rental. We're still renting these units. In fact, I have a person wants to buy one or rent it, doesn't even want to use it himself. We're still gonna be renting these units significantly every, every month.
Under the exact terms that you saw and.
And we're gonna have the best restrictions that meet every expectation that you access to me. Regardless of what we do. But ownership is different than zoning. And I do, I I think that the representation of rental versus ownership changes nothing. I think I could make that argument stick. Because if you have restrictions on the property, they drive the use of the property, period. Now, I've only been doing this for fifty two years. I'm getting senile, but I can tell you. That I really believe that. We could do this with a modification agreement by submitting to your committee. The language for review. And editing. And once we came to a mutual agreement on the language, I would think that that would be. More than sufficient to show that the intent and is still in place that we said we had.
And I believe you're saying the same thing that still people in here are saying.
No, I would like to think, I think that that the board's here today because they wanted the process to be able to capture the language. Make sure that we have the same guarantees moving forward. Put the covenant in, if I'm understanding what you guys were talking about and.
Yeah.
Making sure that the process is followed.
I mean, I just want to say, I mean, as a board is on the field, I mean, we have an obligation to make sure that we have what's covered.
I know. And I respect.
And so I mean, we're representing more than just four people.
Sure, I respect that.
And I mean, I I just want that now. I'm not speaking a hundred percent for myself. But I I I answer to others as well.
Right.
And that is my, I mean, that's part of my oath when I took the position.
And yeah. Like I said, I know I could. We don't know what we don't know. And so. That's what, you know, as I started, you don't know what we don't know. And so if people have questions about, well, what does condo mean? So now they're selling them as houses? Well, no, that's not it at all. So we can help explain some and do that in this meeting here.
I have one other quick question. Can I donate an air conditioner for this room?
You would think our building commissioner has one job. So what kind of price points do we talk about on these units that are going to be sold?
Well, I'm really happy that you always ask that question.
By the way, they vary. You've got different price points come in.
From three to four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Now, that sounds like a lot of money. And to know what's going into these, but we, I wish you'd all come look at.
Well, Al.
They're finished inside and out. They're very high quality. We're putting masonry, three hundred and sixty degrees around them. Commercial thickness of asphalt and parking. Landscape, three hundred and sixty degrees, three is where we can put them. Irrigation, first class, all the way. It'll be the nicest executive storage. Facility in Indiana. And I've looked at four or five of them that are supposed to be nice. They're not this.
I appreciate that, but I know nobody on the board here has ever considered condominiums as a place to live.
By the way, when Burke described them as garage to me the other day, I found found in my chair like. Nice garage you've ever seen.
It is a nice garage, but it's still a concrete floor garage.
So I I wasn't on the B Z A uh when this came in twenty twenty one.
Yeah.
So uh, these might be some very basic questions.
Yeah.
Uh, so technically, uh, I guess I would say I'm a prospective tenant. I mean, I could, I could rent one of these.
Rent.
Purchase one. Um, what's the criteria for somebody like me? To meet, what's the criteria I need to meet to be able to uh meet the executive storage?
Well, he lease or own?
Uh, uh, let's start with lease.
So an application.
So you you described this as executive storage. So what can I store in there? Is there a, is there a certain criteria I need to meet?
You can store anything legal. Anything's a content ban.
So if I. Hypothetically, if I start a lawn care business. I could, I could store my lawn care equipment in there?
You can't, you can't have an external sign for a business and you can't run your business out of there.
Right.
But you could store.
I could store.
You could store it there, but you can't run your business out of. You can't create a business nuisance by virtue of running a business out there. If you're an E trader. You can go in your unit, shut the door, sit down at the table and run your E trade and that's not a nuisance.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, what would be um the. What would be the benefit for me to buy a unit as opposed to rent a unit? What, how how would I?
You can rent it cheaper than you can own it. The leases, I'm happy to share with you. Uh, there's three, three sizes for lease. And uh, well, I've sold on paper. We haven't closed and. In fact, I haven't even signed a contract on the other one. It's a handshake. Uh, and the one that contract that I did sign, this is my best friend. And if I get him in a headlock, he'll. Throw it out out the window if we needed to. Um, but the point is, uh, you can, there's a fourplex building and you can lease for fifteen hundred a month. Or you can buy it for two hundred ninety five thousand. So you do the math, eighteen thousand on two hundred ninety five thousand. Um. You decide, would you want to own it? I think a lot of it has to do with a person's personal uh liquidity. And if someone's very liquid and they can make six percent on their own money owning it, they'd rather just own it. Plus, the history of this community is if you buy something today, you make money on it tomorrow. Okay? Part of the whole purpose in the development that's taking place in this community. Is to make it possible that average American that live in this town. As part of the dunes. And every tax base that's created in this community that has suffered from a lack of tax base. Over the past fifty years since I've been here. I've had a vote on there since nineteen seventy two with Jack Campbell Senior. That's how long I've been here. And the bottom line is, as we create this tax base and this town can pay its own engineering bills instead of me. And pay its own legal fees instead of me. Um. The the whole concept of ownership, homeownership in this town is going to start to improve significantly. By virtue of this huge increase in infrastructure that we are affording through grants, T I F. And the Collins family that's writing checks so that we can get more tax base here. The toy barns are part of that system. So having some cell. Will make me pay more taxes, unfortunately. But I'm just trying to accommodate what the customers would like to have accommodate.
I'd like to hang on to one other question, sir. Since there was a homeowners association mentioned and you were asking about purchasing. Uh, what is the H O A fee?
Per per building, it is five hundred dollars a month. If there's four units in a building, it's a hundred and twenty five dollars a month. If there's three units in a building, it's a hundred and sixty eight dollars a month. If there's. Two, two fifty a month, and I kept a building, one building, so I'm gonna pay five hundred a month.
Okay, and? And that H O A fee would be applicable to just the rent.